You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the January tenth twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
It is January tenth twenty twenty four. It is twelve o'clock. I like to call this meeting of the social status of African American male to order. Can we all rise for the pledge, please? Mr. Cox, you can leave us.
Please use silver flag moving the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, on the roll call, please.
He's on.
He's on Zoom. Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Stacy Benny.
Present.
Linda Conley here. Pastor Carol.
Present.
Walter Cox.
Present.
Jonathan Patrick. Pastor Hurt.
Present.
Pastor Johnson.
Present.
Mike Jones.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
Ben Moore.
Present. And Fish Patrick has resigned from the council.
Right, I saw that.
Excuse me, I didn't hear Kenny Fly's name called.
Kenny Fly. You were the first. You were the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Conley. I'm here.
I was going. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, we have a dilemma at this point in time where um we have individuals who terms have expired. I would like, I would entertain the decision of this board. Those who terms have expired cannot vote. It will be a violation of Robert's Rules of Order. And Tony, I know you don't like Robert's Rules of Order, but it's just that we have to follow this. I don't, I don't like, I don't want to call everyone out by name whose term has expired. We know there's at least three or four of us that has term has expired. Madam Secretary, if it's not asking too much of you, could you please send a letter to the mayor's office asking her to either reappoint or we need reappointments done as soon as possible? If you could probably stop in and address that with them before we leave. It's more than appropriate. We have to do it that way. Make sure that we we doing things proper and in order.
Um, CC, the people. Oh, yes.
Just as I, Kenny Fly term has been updated and in accordance with the policy.
We just need to, we just need them to update the system.
That was one of the things. That was one of the things I was planning on doing, at least today, is to stop by someone's office to get the update and so that everyone know, because I think when they had the meeting, didn't they extend the terms?
I thought that's what happened, but.
But I noticed that their website has not been updated.
I can take care of that part, but I need to know for sure that it's the council and the mayor's responsibility. So I won't overstep that. I'd just like to make sure that the appointments were sent to the council, I mean, to clerk's office. Mr. Fly, are you there?
Uh, ye- yes, I am.
Happy New Year. Um, I have a question. Did you did you take your oath yet?
Yeah, I went and did everything yesterday.
Okay, we're gonna need everyone to take the oath if you get put back on or however it's gonna be decided. I'm gonna yield the floor to Mr. Millsap.
Yes, Mr. President, just please be advised that my letter was sent to the clerk's office yesterday for my reappointment for the Swanson Center.
Nothing like last minute.
Mine has expired February.
Yeah, mine has expired in February.
So we have a lot of people also that's expiring next month, so please put your interest back in. Mr. Fly, is that what you did as well?
Yeah, I went in, I got got reappointed at the mayor's office yesterday.
So we need someone to make sure they um, you need to make sure you fill out another form if you have a mayor appointment or if you have a council appointment, refill that out so we can get this all taken care of. I really would like to adjourn this meeting, but we have enough to vote. I wasn't anticipating this at this time. I don't know who gonna be the new people that's coming onto the board, and I thought that was a main concern of all of us. That we wanted to make sure that we know everybody that's gonna be here. So I'm going to entertain a motion to put off this election until next month.
I'll make that motion.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? Hearing none. It carries. Um, the approval of the minutes. Again, those who are not, your terms are expired, please do not vote. The approval of the minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
We got the minutes first.
The minutes, I'm sorry. That's what I meant. I apologize. I meant the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yes.
Since Kenny is participating.
He must, forgive me, on the hybrid, on the hybrid, Mr. Fly, you must be seen and heard.
Okay, that's the second, sure.
And we, and we're gonna go back and we're gonna start off at the um, we're gonna go back and start off at the minutes, the approval of the minutes again, and then we're gonna, we have to do a roll call vote because Mr. Fly is appearing by Zoom. Miss, Madam Secretary.
Kenny Fly.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny.
I can't vote until my term is fixed.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Ben Moore, you can't vote.
So the ayes have it.
We have enough.
We have enough, yes.
I'm sorry. Um, next, we're gonna go back to the Mr. Cox motion to to put off the election to next month. We have to have a roll call vote on that as well. Ms. Conley on that, please.
Kenny Fly. Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap. Ayes have it.
Um, next, I'm just gonna go down to, I'm gonna go down to subcommittee reports, and we're gonna keep it the same. So we're just gonna do reports as, I don't think it's be any more votes here. So we will start off with education. Mr. Mr. Hurt, Pastor Hurt.
All right, we were able to take the group to see the Bulls, and that trip was a success. We took twenty-three students with five chaperones and an enjoyable time for everyone, and we're looking forward to more trips in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Is there anyone else on education that would like to add something to that? Hearing none. Can we go on to health? Mr. Pastor Johnson.
Thank you, Brother Chairman. At this time, we are reorganizing the Minority Health Coalition because one of the members has been appointed to the mayor's staff. And at the next meeting, we will have scheduled for twenty-four. And we will have seminars at Pastor Hurst Church and at Pentecostal Temple. So that's our report for the Health Department.
Mr. Johnson, Pastor Johnson, I may ask a question.
Yes, sir.
When you have the the meeting, would you invite all of us as well?
We will do that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Hearing none. Let's go to appointment.
No report at this time. However, we're supposed to have a fundraising meeting after immediately following. Can we still have that even though we don't know who's gonna be in the process? Or shall we reschedule it to next month?
All the members that we have now, that that will be up to us at the end. We'll we'll meet after the end and see.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Criminal justice. Ms. Benny.
Um, we were in collaboration with the Education Committee when we took the kids to the Chicago Bulls game, and it was a good time had by all. So I'm in agreement with Pastor Hurt that we'll look forward to hopefully raising more monies and trying to do something else for the youth, specifically the African American males that we represent.
Mr. Hurt, in addition to that, I'd like to publicly thank the Michigan City area schools. They ensured that we had transportation on one of their buses. We also had help from Jimmy John's.
Yes, we we had donations by Jimmy John's and Subway that provided us with sandwiches, a lunchbox there and back. So we would like to thank them. We're very grateful that you were able to generously provide us with those things, and the kids enjoyed it.
And I will briefly just add to this, excuse me. Um, Pastor Hurt, Ms. Benny, you guys went over and beyond, and you made this happen for every one of you, every one of those young people that showed up. The money was not the issue, but just your presence and the way that y'all, the way that you handled the group and and making sure everybody was fed, everybody had a good time. And without you guys, this wouldn't have never happened. So my hat's off to you. I truly mean thank you. And I also want to thank the Laporte, Laporte Council, Laporte Council. They was the ones who provided the finance side of that, along with Mr. Pastor Pastor Hurt. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I mean, the future look bright. If we can keep this going, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great.
I just want to add, Mr. Chair, that officially now we've expended all of the funds that were donated by the city council between the two field trips.
The county council.
The county council, I'm sorry.
Yes, and I'm just wanna add something to the criminal justice off the, nothing to do with the field trip. I was called, I received a phone call last night by Mark Yagelski. He's a county council member. He brought it to my attention that we have some issues over in the county when it comes to individuals being arrested, and they they go to court and then they plead guilty. I think this is a travesty. After those individuals plead guilty, some of them decide to take weekends. So you can, you have the option to do three weekends, four weekends, how many ever, right? Every time they turn himself in on a, for the weekend, they rebooked, and they mugshot, go right back up, and here we go again. One person was arrested for one charge, and it looks like he has four of those charges now. I don't, I don't think it's the legislators' responsibility to change the law. I think it's the county, I think it's the sheriff's responsibility and the county commissioners to look into that. If you serve your time and you plead guilty and you serve your time, it's like double jeopardy. You're going in there every time you turn yourself in over the weekends. Mr. Jones, you might want to add something to this because you you worked as a deputy. I've never heard of that in my life.
Well, I never, I never.
Speaking to the mic, please.
When they came in on the weekend, I remember booking them again. They just, you know, gave me their stuff and they went to, you know, the holding cell downstairs. They might not even went upstairs for the weekend, you know, just stayed down and processed. That's what I remember.
It's just a travesty because then when you look at an individual, because you know, a lot of us are busybodies, we'll go on my case, and we will, we will report them to the employee. Look, this person has four charges within within, within three months or within one month. And this person happened to lose his job because of it. So we need to stand up or say something on that, and maybe you can bring it to the NAACP attention, and we can collaborate together to go over to the county and get some answers on this. That's, that's, that shouldn't happen. But one of the suggestions I did make to Mark Yagelski was, because I'm on the Community Correction Advisory Board as well, that they send weekenders to community corrections as opposed to sending them to jail, because I'm assuming they say anytime you go to jail, you gotta get booked in. This is a travesty. And it's wrong. So, Mr. Millsap, I think you want to add something?
Yes, uh, being familiar with the county process when I was a former commissioner, that's an internal issue, and Mark Councilman could easily give the department a head and work that out. So it's not something that can't be fixed. It's just that it has to be addressed and taken through the proper procedures. So I think that can be corrected, but the right individuals have to get together and sit down and get it going.
Madam, I share.
Thank you, Mr. Millsap. Mr. Fly?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that also, and you got a point there. As you go there and they bring up all the charges you ever had almost on your record. I would agree with Mr. Millsap. I think it's more or less set of changes in the law. When you do get booked in, just booking in on your current charge that you're there for without all your past and past charges. So I think that shouldn't be a real hard task. If you guys do get up on it, maybe they can just enlist you with your current charge that you're there for.
Thank you, Mr. Fly. Like I said again, I would like to work with the NAACP, and and we all work together and have some say in this or even write a letter. Address a letter to the council, explain what Mr. Millsap has said, and my my alternative solution as well. I want to back up to to appointment, and I want to say that I want to thank Sheila Broson, I mean Sheila Matthias. She showed up at the county commissioners' meeting, and she also demanded the same thing that we have been demanding. Why has Monique not been hired full-time? No one knows. They increased the pay to try to bring someone in to, I believe, six figures, and no one has applied. They cannot find no one still, but they seem like they are, forgive my language, hell-bent on finding someone other than Monique Thomas. I think the time has come that we need to start showing up as a group. Just show up as a group, and one of us can speak, all of us can speak. This is unacceptable at this point in time. Monique has her master's degree, if I'm correct. She's been there well over, she's been there too long. She knows the ins and outs. All we ask is that, we've been asking since Dr. King's days, is the opportunity and a chance to be treated fairly and given us the opportunity to perform. Ms. Ms. Moore.
When is the next meeting?
It will be, the county commissioners' meeting will be, is that next week or is it third Tuesday?
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, I'm sorry, third Wednesday. I will send it out in an email to everyone, and we might want to go to the Laporte County Council meeting as well. Mr. Millsap.
Yes, once again, that's, the county has a procedure on handling situations like that. My question is, the people who make that decision, have they came up with a response on why it hasn't happened?
As you know, as a commissioner, they will not answer the question. You can ask questions, but they will not respond. Ms. Matthias did not receive a response, but she spoke well about the situation, and I think we are all in agreements. Mr. Hurt, Pastor.
The Northwest Indiana Ministers Conference went with NAACP to the last meeting or the last council meeting. And they made it appear that she had lost the county a large amount of money. But they brought someone from the insurance company to explain how the insurance works for them. And he made it very clear that the amount of money that they were talking about was not her fault, and it was cleared up. So that was part of the reason that they were saying she was not being hired, but it was not legit, because all of the monies that they were talking about were not valid, that money had been returned to the county.
Mr. Millsap.
Mr. Millsap. It appears that the only way that this can be resolved is if the individual has a grievance and she goes to council to represent her on her grievance to the county. So it appears that it might be in the process. We don't know that, but I think it's one of those, let's wait and see what happens.
Whenever they ask us to wait, that all, that means they're not gonna do nothing. And that's the experience that I had with with certain issues dealing with with the government. I don't know who coined the phrase, but united we stand, divided we fall. I say we stand united with signs, and we go to the next meeting and ask, what's the problem? We can't keep taking any excuse, and we're here, we're bored. We gotta stand in the gap of our fellow sisters and our fellow brothers. We have to take a stand or we're gonna keep falling for anything. So I like to see us all do it together, but again, that's just a group situ, that's a group effort. It's gonna take all of us agreeing and all of us showing up one day out of our, just one day, just show up at the meeting and voice our opinion and stand together. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Could you turn your mic on? Repeat that, please.
I will be present at that meeting.
And if we can get the NAACP on this one again, and the Ministry Alliance, all of us coming together. Not not a small group, no one, we not looking to take credit for nothing. We looking to make sure that a person is given the opportunity that deserve to have the opportunity. I have nothing to add to that.
Uh, is it possible to do what Commissioner Millsap stated? Be in contact with her to see if there is a grievance that has been filed. If it has not been filed, then we can take steps to make sure our presence is being noticed. I hope that Mr. Millsap can follow up on that, because you're the one that had the constant contact, Mr. Millsap.
Yeah, I will follow up on that, but let's, before we circle our wagons, let's just take it step by step and do it the proper way. No disrespect to no one, but this is just something that needs to be addressed, and I think I can almost guarantee you that the legal process will resolve the issue.
I just want everybody to know that we are, we are ready to go. We stand, we're late, and we're ready to go. So social factors, Ms. Ms. Moore.
We did not have a meeting. Social factors did not have a meeting. However, I've been, the Michigan City Black History Month Committee, I sent out an email.
May I interject? I would like to, I would entertain a motion to add Ms. Moore's last, her request for payment or request to give a donation to the Historical Black History Board.
The Michigan City Black History Month Committee.
I will entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
Okay, so hold off on that?
If somebody's second or have a motion or entertaining, we can, we can have a vote.
Second. I'll make a motion to to add that to the agenda.
On the roll call, Madam Secretary.
Point of order, though. Am I correct that only the people that are?
We're not.
Okay, all right, just for the record, because we don't want this to be, well, it's so-and-so voting, they couldn't, so.
Yeah, we had to add it to the agenda first.
Okay, oh, we're adding, okay.
Oh, yes.
No problem. All right.
Kenny Fly.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Stacy Benny. She can't. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. I'm sorry.
Just abstain.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
And Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Ms. Moore, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay, so he said, I sent out the requests from the Michigan City Black History Month Committee. In the past, we have done either the bronze level at a hundred dollars, where you get recognition at the end of the month celebration and logo on all materials distributed to the media. The silver level, we have also done that, which you get recognition at the end of the month celebration, logo on all materials distributed to the media, recognition at all events, and invitation for one, for one, at the community brunch and the dinner dance. So I don't know what level you guys want to rec rec to vote for, the hundred dollars bronze or the two hundred and fifty silver?
Mr. Millsap has a question.
It's a one hundred dollars or two hundred dollars, correct? Is that the choice?
No, no, it's it's a lot more. There's a platinum at seven hundred and fifty dollars level.
Okay.
There's a gold at five hundred dollars.
Okay.
But in the past, we've done either the silver level or the bronze level.
Which is a hundred.
The silver level is two hundred and fifty, and you get, and you get, one person can go to the brunch and one person can go to the dinner dance.
And the least expensive one is one hundred, correct?
One hundred is the bronze. You get the recognition on the materials that you were a supporter.
Treasurer, what do we have to work with?
We currently have one thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. However, Pastor Carol is donating effective today a hundred dollars. Mike Jones stated that after our last meeting, he also donated a hundred dollars. But I also want to give acknowledgement to, right after the last meeting, Commissioner Hurt and Commissioner Conley also donated a hundred dollars, which includes the one thousand, included in that equals one thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. So once these other two hundred dollars are added, we'll have twelve hundred and ninety-eight dollars. But at this time, we have officially one thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
With that being said. May I, may I?
Mr. Mr. Fly.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Fly?
Yeah, I want to, I want to, I hundred dollar to the board.
I, I can't, we didn't hear what you said.
Okay. I want to include my hundred dollars donation I'm gonna give to the board also.
Could you please take that to the controller's office and get a receipt? Mr. Fly?
Yes, I heard you.
All right, thank you.
So then with that being said, once Mr. Fly donates his one hundred, we'll be, officially, we'll be at one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. But until all of that stuff is calculated with the controller's office, we officially have one thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. So I would recommend the one hundred dollar level.
Ms. Moore, since you brought this to our attention, what would be your pleasure?
Well, knowing our financial situation, I was thinking the one hundred, the bronze.
I will entertain a motion.
With that being said, I would like to make a motion that we make a one hundred dollar donation to that committee.
I second.
We have, we have a motion and a second. On the roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Ken Fly.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Linda Conley, aye. Pastor Carol.
Aye.
Tony Cox.
Aye.
Pastor Hurt.
Aye.
Pastor Johnson.
Aye.
Mike Jones.
Aye.
Willie Millsap.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, everyone. Ms. Ms. Moore, you can finish your report if you have anything else to add.
No, one more thing. There was a press release that the Dr. Martin Luther King celebration is gonna be held in Michigan City on the fifteenth. It's the Northwest, the MBA of Northwest Indiana is sponsoring this. Denise Ship, Denise Ship Glenn is the president. That's the Mellon Business Association, the MBA, the Mellon Business Association. It's sponsoring a Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The event will take place at the Michigan City Salvation Army, located at twelve oh one Franklin Street, Michigan City, from ten AM to one PM. And the celebration of Dr. King is open to all and will be filled with engaging activities and meaningful conversation. There will be a brunch served and is free. And the keynote speaker was the main reason why I wanted to bring this. Our keynote, the keynote speaker is Laporte County Magistrate Erica Starworth. She will share her deep knowledge and inspiring words to shed light on the importance of Dr. King's legacy and its relevance in today's world. Magistrate Starworth is the first African American judicial officer in the one hundred and ninety-year history. in the one hundred and ninety-year history of Laporte County, Indiana. Magistrate Starworth holds a bachelor's degree in psychology from Spelman College, a master's degree in social work from the University of Michigan, and a Jewish doctorate degree from Loyola, Loyola, Loyola. Okay, got it. University of Chicago School of Law.
Mr. Millsap?
Yes, uh, Ms. Moore, are we gonna have any activities at the, our local Martin Luther King Center?
No, we will not. We will not.
Okay.
I can answer that on the board. Yeah, we will not. We have, um, we have something going on that will hopefully be resolved by February.
Okay.
Yes.
Because it, you know, common sense.
Correct, we agree.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Moore, where, what's the location again? The Salvation Army, twelve oh one Franklin Street. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by any other commissioner? I open the floor up now to public comment. Seeing that if there's none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.